All right, time is 7:30. I'll call this for our council meeting to order. So I mean the fledge of allegiance to our flag.
The fledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the government for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We begin this evening with our call.
Thank you. I love them great.
Mr. Feiner?
Mr. Feiner.
Thank you. Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Gria?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. McCann?
Here.
Mr. Kurt?
President.
Thank you.
Thank you. With seven members present, we have a call. We'll begin this evening with community announcements. This is an opportunity for any member of council to announce an event, item of public interest, anything from council, same offer to the public.
John, can you go announce the trees?
Yeah, so I was gonna wait till the committee report, but I guess it is a good time right now. So as a new liaison to the Tree Shade Committee, just gonna wanna throw out they're giving away ten trees. They're gonna be planting in November. It's a great program. They wanna get new people involved, too. That's the important thing. They wanna kinda first serve those people who have never taken advantage of the program, so they would like to get new trees into new yards in Yardley Borough. And then, like I said, if people are repeat customers, have gotten a free tree in the past, we'll get those people second. But it is on the Yardley Facebook page. To give everyone a heads up. It's a great program, and the Tree Shade Committee does really good work and good people, and it's a great program, and they'll be doing it in November, so please reach out to them. If you're interested in a tree, and they have all different types, I was just talking to Lian, she ran into that. They're also trying to get different hybrid types that are more resistant to some of, you know, invasive species of insects and things like that that have been plaguing some of the trees here in Yardley and Box Hill and so.
Thank you, John. Just for a clarification, that can go on private property, right?
Yes, yes, in people's yards, exactly. In people's yards, that's what they're looking to do on private property, and they'll plant it for you. They do a fantastic job and give you information how to tend for the tree, too.
Great. Anyone wants a tree, let us know. Can I hear something from Mr. Feiner, or are we done? All right, we'll close out community announcements and move right on to Bob.
Open position are the hard board. For the right kind of person, you know who you are, it's a great position. So I would like to encourage people, if you're excited, to apply for a hall, so that we can fill that position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feiner. So anyone interested in applying to serve on the Historic Architectural Review Board, Paula can give you the application, and that will then be reviewed by council.
Thank you. Do you need to formally accept the resignation receipt, but we can do that later on? Right?
Gentlemen, yes. Stick it to the man for now. All right, would you want to public comment? This is the portion of the meeting during which members of the public may address council regarding items that do not appear on the agenda. If you wish to address council regarding an item that does appear on the agenda, you'll be able to do so by the council vote on that particular item. Residents are asked to please come to the front microphone, state your name and address for the record, and public comment is limited to three minutes apiece. Anyone like to make public comment tonight? Dr. Prominer?
Okay, I'm gonna do this fast to get the statements. Paula Johnson currently serves as the Yardley Borough Manager, Yardley Borough Secretary, Yardley Borough Right-to-Know Officer, and as an auxiliary police officer with the Yardley Borough Police Department. The police officer position is an obvious conflict of interest. Her salary for the borough manager position, non-putting benefits for this year is eighty thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars. I do not know what, if any, she's getting paid for other positions. Additionally, she has a pension under the Yardley Borough Police Department's collective bargaining agreement as a non-uniform. Ms. Johnson's qualifications for the position of Borough Manager have been questionable. In fact, there was a lawsuit on how she was hired. Because she did not meet the basic qualifications for this position, large portions of her job were outsourced at huge expenses to taxpayers. A financial assistant had to be hired to do the town's budget on the primary jobs of the manager. Engineers and consultants are paid to solicit grants and deal with issues that a qualified manager should easily be able to address. As the Right-to-Know Officer, she rarely provides documents from RTA requests in less than thirty-five days, and almost always hires the borough attorney to respond to requests, again encouraging more legal fees. There are significant breaches in confidentiality in many areas, including copying emails, gossiping about residents' personal information, and disclosing who filed complaints against whom. Contracts have been awarded without being bid on, and the few that are bid on are questionable since she has no regard for confidentiality. In the position of manager, she's supposed to supervise code enforcement, building, and zoning officials. Her mismanagement has resulted in the current animosity and divisiveness throughout the town, and has significantly increased borough legal fees, who have to respond to many potential lawsuits due to the inability to manage this office. Manager Johnson continues to abuse her position by engaging in cronyism, especially in the form of arbitrary and deprecious code enforcement. She continues to allow certain buildings to be renovated with obvious major structural changes without requiring zoning, engineering reports, or architectural drawings. In fact, she even ignored a complaint that was forwarded from the fire marshal months ago regarding an apartment building that is in violation of fire safety codes. She prioritized protecting cronies at the expense of tenants' sake. There is little and often no response to residents' emails or inquiries. The question is, why council is ignoring residents when they bring these issues up? When I'm on council, I will not ignore serious allegations and will respond when someone brings them up.
You know, I hate to bite.
Do you want me to say it?
So, let Mayor Harding do it.
I would just like to put on the record that I think there were a lot of opinions in the statement read, many of which I do not agree with, and I don't think council agrees with, and I also think there were some facts and some statements made that were made as facts that I believe were untrue and incorrect. So I'd just like to have that on the record.
I would also like to echo Mayor Harding's comments.
Thank you. Paula, I refer you to your performance evaluations last year, which was positive. Also, isn't it fun when your compensation package is public information? Mine's too. I love it. Is there any other public comment tonight? All right, hearing none, we will close that portion of the meeting. Next up is consideration of the consent agenda dated for today, October 5th. It includes three items. Those are approval of the minutes for our September 21st meeting, approval of the bills list dated today, October 5th, and approval for the Veterans Day procession and memorial. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So, the banner.
And the banner. Sorry, I'm looking at the old agenda. So added to that list is the banner for Beer Fest, which will be there for October 13th to 25th. All right, motion was made by Mr. Ross, talking to Mayor Mr. Morris. Is there any comments or questions from council? Anything from the public? Dr. Prominer?
Two questions on the bills list. One was a check from McLaughlin, check number 19279, four hundred dollars. Is that for training or membership dues?
Memberships, I think it was.
Oh, okay. The other one was the Streetlight Fund, Armour &amp; Sons Electric, check number 955, for a hundred and forty dollars and twenty cents. Armour &amp; Sons Electric has received two hundred and sixty-one thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-one cents. That's a lot of light bulbs.
I think a large portion of it was bid contract.
Yeah, I made it after.
That went through a formal bid process.
It went through a formal bid process.
And it was.
It was great.
It was the project of Main Street that we do.
No, I understand. So there were other bids on that one also?
Yes.
And they were the longer.
And the engineer handed that, and not the manager. And who solicited the bid?
It was. It was private.
Okay, through the engineer. Okay, not the manager.
I actually, it was probably a do and after. I don't know. It was before anyone here was on council.
Yeah, the borough solicits the bids. You know, someone prepared the bid package, but it's the borough itself that seeks bids for these projects.
And there were technical components of the bid that require.
Yeah, but you're very specific where you put the documents and the questions and the rest of the stuff, yes. Well, I think it's a balance of the engineers soliciting bids.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Now I'll call a question. All those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any post, extensions, carry seven zero? Chief Kelly, please report is next.
Thank you, sir. I have two items tonight. First is the monthly statistics for the September 2021. The police department handled four hundred and seventy-three calls for service, issued twelve parking tickets. We issued eighty-eight traffic citations, investigated five traffic accidents, and made four arrests, one of which was for DUI. Second item is that Officer Daniel Baxter resigned on the thirtieth of last month. He accepted a full-time position with the Temple University Group Department, and we, Officer Baxter was a five-and-a-half-year veteran. We wish him the best of luck in his future career. And that's my thoughts.
Thank you, Chief Kelly. We'll move right along to Mayor Johnson. Your report.
We continue to work on the draft 2022 budget. Everything seems to be going along with the county council's all their input, and that's all I have for tonight.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna brag about your accomplishments from today a little bit. We got some motion on the Pico property, which is the good ones that's been bouncing around for a while, and we just got some communication from them today, thanks to Paula's nut. So hopefully that will be on agenda sometime soon. All right, Ms. Kelly, engineers' report.
Sure thing. So unless anybody on council has any questions in regards to the general update items, I don't have anything different than what was reported in the reports that is in your agenda papers.
All right, hearing none.
I did have a question. Just people have been asking on North Main Street, what's going on. And I'm curious, because I acted a lot.
So that's another question that we had.
Mr. Feiner, we'll update on that in the project update section, so that's gonna get by in just a few minutes.
I was also confused about the project updates versus the general updates, so I'll save.
Sounds like project updates are.
The one that people care about. It's wild. Okay, so I'll go right into the sidewalk then, hearing. So as mentioned in the last meeting, we did receive our HOP from Penda on September 16th. Now that we have that, and we had our environmental supplemental documents, we were able to move forward with executing the grant agreement with Penda MTF. They sent over the agreement documents last week. Paula and me would just sign them. So we will send that back out to get fully executed, so that will trigger when we should reach out to the representatives to push that forward as quickly as possible. Once the grant is fully executed, then we can send them the bid package for them to approve. Once they approve the bid package, then we're allowed to go out for advertising. So we're kinda in this series of steps that we need to occur before we can put the project out for bid, but these are the rules to get the grant line. But the bid package is pretty much sitting and waiting to do that, so we're in good shape for that to go out as soon as we get the thing okay.
Can you elaborate a little bit on the prospective timeline of when it's gonna go out the bid potentially, and then when, you know, is there a potential idea when we break ground?
Yeah, at this point in time, we're probably looking at not breaking ground until spring, just because we're gonna get into the cold weather. When I spoke with the grant coordinator, he said executing the agreements has typically been taking about six weeks for them to go through the full review process, but we think that if we ask our representatives to kinda step in and get it moved to the top of the pile, it hopefully will not be that long. Our goal is to get under contract before the end of the year, so that as soon as the weather breaks enough, they can get started right away on the sidewalk. So yeah, as soon as the bid package is approved, we'll immediately put it out for the first round of advertising. But yeah, we haven't already when they're gonna approve the grant agreement. I think we'd be like, exact.
Yeah, I'd just like to give updates to neighbors and, you know, because it is something that constantly people ask about.
Yeah, we're, I mean, we're gonna break ground come spring. There's no way we'll miss that deadline down with where we're at right now. And then, right now.
Is there, is there a time, when you say because the ground, I mean, it's when you're able to get that process to be short, let's say six weeks to two weeks, is there, is there any possibility, is there, you know, has it, has it had some way of authority?
Yeah, you're right.
Many ways to get it done, but for.
Potentially. It would depend on the contractor that ends up winning the bid. If they decide that they can get the work done before the ground freezes, they'll, they can do that. It'll be more up to them. We'll make sure to put through the contracts as quickly as possible and give them the go-ahead, and then it will be up to them when they start. And so if we end up having a mild winter, maybe, maybe we could get it done before the end of the year, but it's very dependent on when we get the agreement through and fully executed.
Thank you.
But speaking of that, moving forward with phase three, the next round of Penda's MTF grant applications are due on November 5th, so we have to make a decision tonight if they would like to move forward with putting through an application for phase three. And then speak with the grant coordinator, ask them how they felt, if that would be or not. We don't have design documents yet. We don't have, like, full working set for the things or what have you, and how competitive that would be. And they said they do prefer the shovel-ready projects, but also sometimes showing that you've already applied for this can bring you higher in the next round. And we've already developed some of the attachments from when we did the DCD MTF grant back in July. So it's up to council if they want to move forward with an application for the sidewalk, but I am encouraging us to put an application for, for the Mary Yard Bridge, because we did say that is a political project for pedestrian access.
All right, well, let's.
Potentially be doing two applications or one?
Let's, let's take them one at a time. Let's, actually, let's start with Mary Yard Bridge.
Well, can I, can I ask, sorry, I just wanted to ask about the, going back about the plan we mentioned. Are you aware of, of what, the whole sidewalk, you, you what phase, there were a couple faders?
Yes.
And if there was a lot of work done?
Yeah.
Just whether if that.
The alignment is incorrect. The alignment is incorrect.
The grant.
No.
It has, it has the old alignment. I, I am aware of what you're speaking of. I've seen those plans. We used them as a go-by when we met with Penda for the tax grant that we were looking into possibly applying for, and they do not have the proper alignment that takes into the consideration that the homeowners did not want to lose any of their yards, and that we needed to be as close to the shoulder as possible to avoid the utility holes.
Liz, can you apply for both of those?
I'm just wondering if you could submit that as a grant, that we do not have time to explain how long it can be modified and aligned, but it's not like no work is done, is my point.
So are you suggesting we submit those old plans?
Well, I, you know, because they're first off, ready projects, I'm not suggesting it's only to strengthen the grant to include that as a sample of previous feet on work, and I complain that it's gonna be rework to match that, because it's not like it's just an idea. There was, there was money investment, there's clearly a will, you know, to get this done.
I can certainly ask them. I don't want to do anything that would be misleading, but I can certainly ask if that's something that would strengthen the application submitting those as well.
Liz had a question about just the cost efficiency. If you're already doing one application, let's say we decide to move forward with an application on Mary Yard Bridge, obviously, there's a familiarity, it would be from the same entity, the borough. Is there a cost effectiveness by applying together, doing it at the same time? Would it take a lot less hours and be cost efficient if we were able to do two, or is it not really matter?
It doesn't really matter, because there completely separate applications that you put through on Penda, but we do already have a profile that exists for Yardley Borough, because we have already submitted applications for this particular grant in the past. So there's already those cost savings and that part. But unless we wanted to apply them at one project, which I don't think is totally off the wall, because this overall effort was to be this connectivity project, to create a pedestrian pathway into the downtown and to the tow path. So I don't think it's totally out of, out of realm to put them together.
But we'd lose if we weren't, because the sidewalk's not shovel-ready, then therefore we hurt our chances to get something for the Mary Yard Bridge. It's just a question.
I can, I think I'm supposed to have another conversation with, I spoke, the rep that I spoke with, they're, I wanted their supervisor to kinda weigh in, and so I'm supposed to talk to them on Thursday, so we can ask if that would be a detriment. Because sometimes what they will do is they won't give you the full amount that you've asked for. Like, they might just give us the stuff for the bridge.
Gotcha.
It may not result in that situation where we, you know, it's a detriment to the bridge. So, yeah, we can, we can figure that out with what combination is gonna be the best for us.
And if we vote on this at the next meeting, if we figure out what the best option is, will it still be time to submit it, if you have that one for this?
Yeah, if, if we vote on it at the next meeting, we will also have to be prepared to... They've been lenient about submitting the resolutions afterwards. If you, if we're not at a stage yet where we wanna, because we have to have a final cost estimate, but we already did a cross estimate for phase three for the DCD grant, and we're in the process of finalizing the new cost estimate for the bridge anyways for the budget. So those are things that are happening anyways. That would be the only thing that we would want permission to do that right now, so that the resolutions, because the resolutions actually include.
The final, right, the numbers.
Yeah. Would we be comfortable with removing resolutions and applications at the same time for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Because, yeah, we would have plenty of time to prep our applications between after the next meeting and the.
Yes, so it's like three or four different ways we could submit it. It's probably best to do a little research, but maybe that's why you go along with it and then defer to council.
Yep.
All right, so I just wanna make sure we have consensus from council on that. So we are going to look at approving resolution and application potentially at the next week, the next meeting, which means that Public Works has some homework.
Yeah, we'll, we'll iron it out, which has the best chance of survival for separate or together.
I mean, I think certainly the bright side on the sidewalk portion, or probably on both portions, that if we are denied this year, we will almost certainly apply again. So it's not as if work that's done just sort of evaporates and goes to no use. Probably largely be able to recycle that, I imagine.
Yeah, no, and a reminder for phase two, we apply to the MTF grant three times before we were awarded it. But we, we're given it once we've actually done design. It does seem like they mean, they mean it when they say they want shovel-ready projects.
All right, we'll probably have a more clear picture next time, but do we have a ballpark estimate of application preparation costs?
Secretly, for the Penda one, since they are a little bit more involved, they've been ranging from twenty-five to three thousand for the effort to do that.
It is a nice segue to the next one. How shovel-ready are we on the Mary Yard the Bridge project?
Are we ready to turn the page yet?
I mean, the plans, like the structural plans and everything is done, but right now the plans are based off of the aluminum bridge. So right now, without knowing what we're doing with regards to the material, some of the details will need to change, but we have the grading plan and the ENS stuff, so there's a full plan package. So it will definitely have, like, nice plans that can be submitted with it, and we can just provide the specs that we have from the different vendors, and the vendor option will be very dependent on funding.
Certainly more ready than the sidewalk application would be at this point, right?
Hundred percent, yeah.
All right, any other comments, questions? Yeah, Chris?
Do you think you could just give thirty seconds on the ML7 project, just so we get it on record that we're continuing to talk about it?
Yeah, absolutely sure. So last week, they had their hearing with DEP, Significant Fines were letting, and then they moved forward with having a pre-construction meeting on Friday. They are still awaiting a write-in entry from the golf course before actual work can begin, but things are indeed moving forward, thank goodness. They are cleared to remove all the fall trees, and they are cleared to restore the street bank, and we are still working back and forth with Gilmore to ensure that their final plan with moving the head wall to another location, putting in a soil, can actually maintain the capacity of water that we expect that site to see. So we've asked for them to show us actual calculations that demonstrate that through a hydrograph, before we're gonna approve that, that plan. We're moving forward with that.
Thank you. Anything else for our agenda?
Yeah, I wanna just return to the Mary Yard Bridge, especially the materials, and I know we looked at another company. Where, where does that stand, and is, or is that something we should discuss at Public Works?
We probably can discuss it at the next Public Works meeting, but I did follow through with that other, the rolling bar, and with the fact that they do not do coatings themselves, it seems like it would be very difficult for us to get the epoxy coating the way that we, we would have to apply some separate paint place to be able to do that.
They don't do like a basic, like Ross coating like the other, you know?
All right. Any other updates on projects?
The FEMA elevations are going pretty smooth so far. Right now, the last round that I think we're gonna move forward with the inspections this year are the properties on Morgan, so we're just working to schedule those. But Ninety-three North Delaware, they have some significant changes that they want done that are outside of the scope of the FEMA grant, and we don't want to impact that, those monies. So we have put together a proposal for those homeowners to prepare the plans that they want to, and see if they wanna move forward with that, so that we're not gonna be impacting the grant budget.
Okay.
So we should be issuing a motion then by end of this week, and we'll let you know how that goes. But they apparently have not been able to find their own architect.
Okay. And just to be clear, they can do improvement outside the scope, but it gets limited in terms of where the grant applies versus where they have to pay for the stuff.
Correct, yeah. And so basically, the situation is some of the changes that they've won will result in a significant amount of money out of their pocket, and before they decide to afford those changes, they wanna know what that's gonna look like.
Okay.
But we have to do the design, and then the beam types, to get the cost estimate. So that's, it is time. It's not a significant amount, but it is time. So we just wanted to do our deal, so it's not using grant money to do that.
Understood. All right, any other final questions before we move on? All right, close the engineers' report, move on to solicitors' report.
Thank you, but I have no report.
Nice and easy. Mayor Harding, you have a report tonight.
Sure, just real quick. We've had a couple really fun radio shows. Thanks to people involved in helping us set those up. But today, I think it's just important that I tell you guys, we spoke with Jess from Crissett, who's a new business. I think I'm pronouncing it right, Crissett, on East Aston Avenue, and we also. And we also spoke with Dino from Ambassador Engineering. So they took up pretty much a whole hour. So it was a great way to promote their new businesses and welcome to town, so.
Thank you, Mayor Harding.
Thank you.
Councilmember reports. Does anyone have a report tonight?
I'll just say, we talked about the issue of parking at, at Community Economic Development and with John Simone. He has some ideas and, you know, we, and I'll welcome anyone to come out to Community Economic Development to kind of have a conversation about parking over the next couple of months to see where we stand. If there's any possible solutions to an issue that many residents are concerned about. So that's it. Thank you.
Any other reports tonight? All right, I think we're on course to make this a quick one. We have nothing listed for discussion items or other business, so unless a member of council would like to raise an item now.
Well, we need to accept the resignation.
We need to accept the resignation. That is why I have very good views of council. So do we have the name handy?
Vladimir Panal.
Right, is there a motion to accept Vladimir Panal's resignation from the Historic Architectural Review Board?
Oh, make that motion.
Question is made by Ms. Thompson. Second, invited by Mr. Ross. Any discussion from council? Anything from the public? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries, seven to zero. And now I will ask if there's a motion to reject. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
You mean all of those?
No, sir. There's one now. You want it? Take it home. That's, Lou's good.
Never had one.
He's good. I just had one. I just had one. It's good. Sir, how are you?
Good. My son's still telling people about his radio show here.
There you go. He did great.